Quietest. I've heard the room in a long time in here. Good job, class. Good job. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the time I'll call into open session this meeting of AISD Board of Trustees on June 26 at 7:13 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out with us this evening. We'll start our meeting off with the opening ceremony. Would Ms. Lisa Benjamin please lead us in joining the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And many of y'all have seen Lisa's face many a times, but she is officially now the superintendent and the board secretary. So, thank you for all your help and we must take a minute and thank Ms. Jones, who it's her first night off from a board meeting in years from that as she went into a wonderful retirement, which we all hope to be at one day.
And I bet she's not even watching this.
She could be. She could be, Erin. She could be, Dr. Raish. If she is, we're gonna like, she's in trouble because she should not be watching this the first night out. So, Ms. Benjamin, thank you for all your work and Ms. Jones, thank you for everything you've done. We look forward to it. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones, electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you? And if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First, we'll move into our program of presentation. We'll move into a Community Engage for Excellence Award. Tonight, we have a great award to present. A very, very wonderful organization. During the 2013-14 school year, the Tarrant County Volunteer Deputy Registars were actively engaged in registering eligible AISD students to vote. Between 2013 and April 2014, the volunteer deputy registrars visited seven high schools' sites and registered 266 students as new voter applicants. Working with the campus administration, the volunteer deputy registrars conducted information and registration events during the school lunch period. Energized by the success of the first-year initiative, the Tarrant County Volunteer Deputy Registars look forward to continuing their efforts to empower our students in the democratic Would you please join us at the front?
Thank you.
And let us take a couple of minutes and thank you because this is an award, we have the honor of being able to honor our community partners. And as you heard from that brief bio, and it's so brief of everything you do for this community, we can't thank you enough. Nothing's more important than getting them registered, getting our new students registered. Part of our strategic plan is to have students understand a sense of patriotism and life after high school. And we call it life-ready, and you guys are getting them ready for that to take an active role. And especially, I think, from seven elected officials up here, it's critical. You know, it's critical. And you know, we always say, no one ever votes. And seven to 10% people vote, we always wanted to be more because of morale. So, at this time, I'd love to thank you on behalf of the district and present the award, which will come down in a second, but please take a second to say a few words and introduce who's with you.
All right. I want to recognize the people who are with me. Ajibby Killingsworth, who's a coordinator of our efforts and he comes up with all these grand ideas and helps us to implement them. And then this is Grace Elliott, and to raise your hand, Mary Grace Elliott. She is a retired teacher with AISD. And I'd just like to let you know that we accept this award in deep humility and gratitude. And we want to, someone may want to, may have asked themselves, why do we volunteer to register voters? We do this because it's their right. It's a constitutional right guaranteed by our constitution, the right to vote. But it's also the right thing to do. We do this because the young people of today will be our leaders of tomorrow. And as they study government, history, and political science, it is important that they now begin to process and become engaged in this political process and ferret out those issues that are important to them and the future they envision for themselves and for our community and for this country. For in this great democracy of ours, it is at the ballot box that all votes are equal and all voices are heard equally. So, thank you again, and we appreciate your support for AISD students' engagement in the democratic process by exercising their right to vote.
Thank you. And one quick thing, Dr. Cabasos and I kind of presented this award, you know, asking about when we heard y'all's organization, you're not taking the students who are the super patriotic, they're automatically registrators. You're getting some of those who wouldn't normally register. And I think that's even a step further. You get the ones, you know, there's always gonna be one or two that they can't wait, they're 18, they're gonna make it, and those are great ones. But you get the ones who aren't maybe necessarily gonna register, and I think that's a big value add, and we thank you for that. So, if you would, please join us, Dr. Cabasos, please join me down at the front so we can present an award.
And on behalf of the board, we'd like to present this plaque and also as board members, we're only, only board members allowed to give up special lapel pins. We encourage you, as you're registering students, wear an official AISD pin, and we can't thank you enough.
All right. Thank you.
We got it, Spence. We tilted down.
Here we go. One, two.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to the Greater Arlington Lions Club with a special presentation. You guys have become regulars in here.
We like it.
Oh, well, good. We like it when you're here. Step on up. Let me talk about, you want me to talk first or, okay. The Greater Arlington Lions Club recently donated funds to the Texas Lions camp that made each member a lifetime supporting member of the camp. President John Gaus.
Gaus.
Gaus, sorry, John. And some of his fellow Lions Club members are here to present our fearless leader, Dr. Cabasos, with his plaque and pen for this recognition as associate member of the club. John?
Yes. What I'd like to say first off is that the Arlington Lions Club, we've been in existence well over 50 years in Arlington. We have a simple motto, "We serve." Interestingly, we had the police commissioner this morning as our guest speaker and several other members of the police department. One of the things that he brought up, what is that within our communities, one of the best things that you can do to alleviate crime, to prevent crime, to bring crime rates down is to have a good education system. The things that we have been able to do, and there's a lot of behind the scenes as the reason we so wanted to recognize Dr. Cabasos, we have re-instituted Division Clinic this year. We were able to provide over 100 kids with glasses. We did the exams for free. We had Dr. Moody of Arlington provide free exams. We gave them vouchers to get glasses for free. My goodness, if a kid can't see, how are they ever gonna learn? We, in conjunction with Masonic Lodge, provided seven $2,000 scholarships at seven high schools. We also provided Lamar Awards at all 14 junior high schools. And we presented what in the past was one Teacher of Excellence Award. We said Arlington's too big for that. We did one for each school's own, presenting seven Teacher of Excellence Awards. Dr. Cabasos was our, not only our keynote speaker, but behind the scenes, he supported every one of these endeavors. He made them happen. He would not take no for an answer. Non-compliance was not an option, I think is the way he put it. And we had 100% attendance. And then earlier this year, you know, and all of you, a feather in your hats to the bond package that passed. It is the most revolutionary thing that I have seen happen in Arlington in the 30 years that I have been here. It was the greatest, big picture, looking at the whole situation and just doing what needed to be done to take this, our seventh largest city in Texas, up to the standard that it can come to. And I have never seen the cooperation between the superintendent and the school board as we have seen. And y'all are all familiar faces, Dr. Raish, Dr. Peter Barron, Gloria, I mean, y'all have worked together so well to make these things happen. You're familiar faces to us. We want to do anything that we can do to be of service to our community. All of our donations, I mentioned this this morning to the police, you hear it's good. If somebody gives away 80 or 90% of the money that they raise actually goes to the recipients. 100% of every dollar we raise goes to the recipient. We pay for our own breakfasts, whatever, our meeting places. And it was with great pride. When we had excess funds this year, we needed to give it away. And one of the suggestions made was we can become lifetime members of various organizations. And we chose to. And Dr. Cabasos, if you could make your way on down?
Congratulations. No.
You can get your calisthenics in.
Dr. Cabasos, first, Steve, come around. The Texas Oregon and Eye Bank, we do quite a bit with eyesight, blindness. We, Dr. Cabasos has allowed us to place recycling boxes in all of the high schools where we recycle boxes, and most of those go to third world countries and so forth. But we do quite a bit of that in conjunction with the Vision Clinic where we're helping our own local kids. We try to keep as much of our money as possible with the local kids. And because of his dedication and his behind the scenes work in making the Vision Clinic work, we made sure that you received a Life Member Award in the Texas Oregon and Eye Bank, and you should be very proud to have this. It's a very good honor.
Get a picture.
There you go. Do that grip and green. There you go. One more time.
See, Lion Clubs even bring their own photographer. That's our Oregon Eye. Look at that right there.
And secondly, is the Texas Lions camp. The Texas Lions camp was started in 1949. It was originally known as the Crippled Children's Camp. Since then, it has expanded to diabetes, to multiple sclerosis, blindness. There's actually a lady that's on the mayor's council, Donna Anderson. She spoke at our club one time. She had gone down there as a young teenager when she was in high school. She was going blind at the time, and I, her words resonate with me. She said, "It was the first time in my life I felt normal." Because she was with other people that had the same thing. This camp has grown over the years. We continuously support it. This year, we gave $5,000 to provide two buses for the children, many of them from Arlington, that go down to the Lions camp. It is an amazing experience for them. And on behalf of Dr. Cabasos and what he does for our children, we're very proud to present him with a Life Membership in the Texas Lions camp. Not at all. And if y'all haven't noticed, we like Dr. Cabasos. He's an associate member of ours. He's worked relentlessly, you know, to do things to better this community. I wrote him an email one time and I said, "You're the right man in the right place at the right time." And we thank you so much for your service.
John, we like him too. So, thank you to the Lions Club and our deputy volunteer, registration volunteers. As you can see, you know, educating students is a very difficult job. And a lot is on our teachers, and we need the support from outside. And organizations like your two organizations are critical for the success of our students and making them successful to what we want after graduation. So, thank you both for your organizations. Dr. Cabasos, please go right ahead, a few words.
I'd like to just humbly thank you for these recognitions and these awards. And it's your work that inspires so many people, and I appreciate it sincerely. You have a great group. You're very dedicated, and you are very persistent in helping children. And when we have a group of people that are persistent in helping our community, especially our kids, it spreads that value everywhere. So, thank you for everything you do and for this recognition.
Wonderful. Nice to say. We have a couple of more things, and then we'll take a break, but y'all feel free to leave if you need to. We have about 12 minutes worth of information, then we'll have a little reception. Next, we'll go to recognition of Financial Futures Committee members. Dr. Cabasos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'd like to ask Cindy to lead us through this recognition of our FFC members, our Financial Futures Committee members. Cindy?
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Cabasos, good evening. Our Financial Futures Committee has existed for some 22 years now. When it started in 1992, it was named the Citizens Budget Review Committee. And each year, this committee comes together, it's appointed by the board. Each year, people apply to be on the committee. The board appoints the committee members, and that group meets, and depending on the need, that particular year, they may meet six times. I believe one year, we met 13 times. But the committee comes together and they represent a broad range of stakeholders across our community. We have parents, businesspeople, retirees, and teachers on the committee. And the committee comes together and hears a tremendous amount of information about things that will impact our budget and our operations. And then their charge ultimately is to come back to this board and to make recommendations for our upcoming general operating budget for things that should be considered or possibly not considered, as the case may be, to help direct the work of our district to meet the priorities of our community. And so, this committee provides an invaluable service, not only to the board, the administration, but also to the entire community, and we appreciate their work. It tends to not be easy work. Sometimes, they're very complicated issues or complex things to have to process through and try to understand in a very short amount of time in order for them to do their work and make their recommendations back to this board. And so, I'm always impressed with the group each year, and each year, they all take on their own personality, each committee does. And it's very interesting to watch. But we have, this year, there were 21 committee members, and I believe there are approximately 10 of them here this evening. Of course, several people were away on vacation. We have at least one who's away on business this evening. This year's committee reported out to the board in May, May 15, and made 21 recommendations for the upcoming budget. And so, we had, 17 of those were approved either exactly as they were presented or in some modified form by the board. And those recommendations represent approximately $10 million of expense in our budget that is very strategically targeted to meet the goals of the district and the needs of our kids. And so, again, it's an invaluable service, and we appreciate that. And we would like to recognize all of them, and we'd like to call to the podium, the ones who are here this evening. So, I don't know if you all want to join us or...
Sure.
We have, and I will point out that there are several individuals of the group who have served multiple terms, and that's a real credit to them too, because it is a significant time commitment, and it tends to occur in a fairly short amount of time in the spring when there's lots of other stuff going on. And so, people set aside other activities to make this a priority. And so, I always appreciate the folks who come back because as they learn each year, they bring back that knowledge to the subsequent committees, and it has a very valuable impact for the subsequent committees. I believe the individual, I'm gonna call all the names, but I'm gonna start with the ones who I believe are here. Robert Brewer.
So, your theory is?
And Robert's been on the committee multiple terms. You wanna come down? Yeah.
And Jacqueline Echols.
And Jacqueline is the matriarch of our committee. She's served on the committee, I think, about 10 years.
I was gonna say, oh, Jacqueline.
Yeah. And she keeps coming back and provides wonderful insight from a teacher's perspective. Shannon Hammerhand likewise represents one of our teacher organizations and has served multiple terms. And Don Kapalka. This was Don's first time on the committee this year. And we have our newest board member, Keisha Mays, who has served on this committee numerous terms. Laura Thurston. perspective to the committee in the last couple of years. David Wilbanks. He has, he has served numerous terms with the committee. Also, we have Demi Garland here, I believe. Is Demi here? Yes, and this is Demi's first term. And Jeff Harris. And Jeff represented one of our teacher organizations, and this was his first year on the committee. Is there anybody else here this evening from the committee? I think I got everybody. Okay. I'm gonna call off the names of the other folks who couldn't be here this evening. Charles Brady, Justin Chapa, Helen Gonzalez, Nick Hyzer, Randy Hendricks, Dan Malone, Anne Mason, Steve McCollum, Claire Miller, Eric Solis, and John Simmons, and Venetia Wilson. And so, again, we sincerely appreciate your commitment and all of your hard work for the benefit of our kids. So, thank you all very much.
Please, a few words.
Thank you, President Hogg. FFC committee that's here, and those that aren't able to make it, our sincerest gratitude. It was a pleasure being at the meetings with you. The learning curve that you've endured, the information, as I've said previously, at previous meetings, that you had to grapple with and understand is, could be perceived as insurmountable. And you, the tone of this committee this year was definitely one of caring for our kids and our staff as much as possible to aid our strategic plan in driving achievement forward and satisfaction forward. And I can't thank you enough on behalf of our board committee, which was myself, Mr. Hibbs, and Mr. Pompah. It was a difficult task in selecting the committee, appointing the committee from the pool of applicants that we had initially. But it was great picks. You guys are wonderful. I hope you consider continued service in any committees that we might have as a board. Your input is invaluable. It does represent the pulse of the community at large, and we need that. We need all the ears that we can have and your minds, putting intelligent thought and compassion into every decision that you all made and every debate. It was lively at times. Thank you for that, and I hope you consider continued service and spread the word of what a great fun time it was and to share your time with us. Thank you.
Thank you, committee. Thank you, Dr. Raish and the board for this. I think every one of the board members up on this board has served on that committee at some point, so we know how valuable it is. Next, we'll go to the last item before reception. Dr. Cabasos, administrative appointments.
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like to recommend the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal position of West Elementary, assistant principal of Nichols, and assistant principal of Hale Elementary.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barron and a second by Ms. Peña. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Calling the doctor tonight, Mr. Barron. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Mr. Hibbs is on, in Philadelphia on a business trip tonight. So, Dr. Cabasos, please introduce our new appointees.
Thank you, President Hogg. It's my pleasure to present the new principal of West Elementary School, Mr. Brandon Chandler. Brandon attended the University of North Texas at Denton and received his bachelor's degree there at Lamar University, attended and received his master of education in educational administration. Most recently, a principal at Tyler ISD, has been an assistant principal in Grand Prairie, a middle school teacher, and has also been a junior high teacher in Richardson ISD. Brandon, welcome. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, President Hogg, Dr. Cabasos, and members of the board for your vote of confidence. With me this evening are my brother Larry and my mother Susan, and my friends Diana, Cindy, and Mercedes, who are here to support me. I'm looking forward to working closely with the students, staff, parents, and community to make West the absolute best. And I would like to also thank the staff of West for coming out to support me.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Nichols Junior High, Ms. Alicia Cunningham. Alicia attended Sam Houston State University to receive her Bachelor of Science, Lamar University to receive her Master of Education in Administration. Most recently, a science teacher and science interventionist in Mansfield ISD, has taught and been a specialist in Cypress Fairbanks ISD, has taught in Umbel ISD, and Sheldon ISD. Alicia, congratulations. Welcome. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Dr. Cabasos. I would like to thank the members of the school board, and Mrs. Julie Harkrow, and the various Nichols staff members that were involved in my interview process. Thanks to each of you for selecting me and placing your faith in me to serve the students, parents, and staff at Nichols. On a personal note, I know my family at home in Houston is all gathered around my mother's iPad, so hi, Mom. Hi, Dad. To my parents and family back in Houston, thank you so much for all the encouragement to pursue my administrative career. Thanks especially go out to my three men cheering section back here, my husband John and two sons, Tyler and Colby. You guys are my rock, and I appreciate your love and your patience and support. I feel honored and privileged to be joining the Arlington ISD team, and I look forward to great things at Nichols. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Nichols Junior High, Ms. Alicia Cunningham. Alicia attended Sam Houston State University to receive her Bachelor of Science, Lamar University to receive her Master of Education in Administration. Most recently, a science teacher and science interventionist in Mansfield ISD, has taught Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal at Hale Elementary School, Mr. Brandon Holland. Brandon attended West Texas A&amp;M University and received his Bachelor of Arts, Lamar University, and received his Master of Education in Educational Administration. Most recently, a campus testing facilitator at Spear Elementary, has also taught and been an interim assistant principal in Irving ISD. Brandon, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos. I'd like to thank you for your confidence with this appointment to serve the staff and faculty and students at Hale Elementary. I'd like to introduce my wife. I brought my three ladies with me, my wife and my two daughters, Lena and Gwen. Their support for me is, I can't explain how much that means to me. I'm sorry. I want to acknowledge all the colleagues and mentors that I've had the pleasure of working with throughout the last nine years. Everyone that's collaborated with me, worked with me, struggled and grew, provided opportunities that have meant so much in me getting here. Most recently, Principal Selena Bastidas, Assistant Principal David Gilbert, instructional coaches Amy Delgado, who is also here, Marva Bernard, along with the rest of the faculty and staff of Spear Elementary. Want to thank them for all of their efforts in allowing the students of Spear to succeed and their valued friendships. Thank you again, Dr. Cavazos, Dr. Stephen Wertz. I'd like to thank Dr. Melissa Harbrick and Principal Claudia Morales for the challenge of letting me join the team at Hale. And I want to kind of go off script here and thank all the cheering squad from Hale Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Congratulations, Brandon, Brandon, and Alicia. Very well deserved. Hearing people talk about the interview process and what went through, you guys are very well deserving of that. As is our custom, while the appointees, please follow Mr. Kale out in the lobby for a receiving line, so each of us can meet you and welcome you. If you would let the board go first, we'd appreciate that. And if anyone else in the audience would like to wish our Star Telegram news reporter, Ms. Monica Nagy, a birthday, please feel free. She's in the back. She gets to spend many evenings with us here. And what a way to spend your birthday than at a board meeting, Monica, right? So feel free to wish her a happy birthday on your way by and say hello to her. So, and with that, we'll appreciate it. We'll take a brief break approximately at 7:55. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting back to order at 8:01 PM. Next, we'll move to, it's on. Spence turned me down. Said I was yelling earlier. They just had to turn it up because Ms. Solins was here last time. I'm a little, said I'm loud, I can't. Every teacher's ever been telling me that since I was in kindergarten, so. I'm not a ninja. I can't do that. Next, we'll move to public hearing. We'll open our public hearing for the 2014-15 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. We have no cards. We have no comments from the audience. Oh, wait, let's call it. We have the public hearing for the 2014-15 Budget and Tax Rate. Ms. Benjamin, we don't have any cards, correct? That's for the budget on that. Okay? So we have no cards for the public hearing? With that, the public hearing, the 2014-15 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate is now closed. Next, we'll move to Item B, Community and Student Engagement Self-Evaluation Report. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and as part of HB5, it was a component of accountability for community and student engagement that Dr. Carter has been working diligently on and is ready to present. And this may be Dr. Carter's final board presentation, just to take note of that. Dr. Carter.
Good evening. President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. I'm happy to be here tonight, only because it's my last.
Dr. Carter.
No.
Never say never.
There were other presentations that were much more enjoyable to be able to share with you than this one. But let's just move right on. The, oh, this is not, this is not it. Wrong one. Did you hear about the horse that came into the bar? There we go.
It's definitely his last presentation.
It is. Yes, this is a report on the ratings for the Community and Student Engagement Self-Evaluation Project. This is a public hearing for input by, and questions by the public. And this is one of those things that's required in HB5, which comes right up here. The requirements are that there are nine components established by the law. Eight of them are part of the overall rating. But there is a ninth one, I'll get into that in just a moment, which has kind of a different rating. The criteria, evaluation, ratings are set, actually, the criteria are set by the District Wide Committee of Stakeholders. I'm sorry, I did not change this. Here's what was interesting. The Texas Administrative Code got changed just last week to update what the requirements and parameters are supposed to be on this thing, which the PEAM submission is due today. And I take it it probably went today. Good, it went out today. So it just shows you how things got changed and we try to stay strict by the law and whatever the Texas Education, Administrative Code indicated. Now it says, it's just the criteria that are set by the District Wide Committee of Stakeholders, but the district does the evaluation and the actual ratings. The ratings are applied for the criteria, the eight components and the overall, with exemplary, recognized, acceptable, and unacceptable. Very familiar ratings of the tax era. All campuses within the same school level have the same criteria for the self-evaluation. Must have documentation supporting the ratings. We went through the process of obtaining at least summaries of that documentation and that was the basis for setting the campus ratings. The results are reported to the board, as tonight. Ratings and compliance status is posted to the district website, will be. The public hearing must be held by August 8th. The district is well ahead of that deadline date. TA must report the ratings and compliance status on TA website no later than October 1st. Now the results. Number of campuses, what I'm gonna do is give you a summary of the number of campuses at each rating level. In fine arts, the component of fine arts, as you see, there, none of the campuses, on any of them, I'll just say right off, had an unacceptable rating. That was one of the stipulations that we had in setting the criteria and setting the standards, was to ensure that that was not gonna happen. It was supposed to showcase. That was the whole intent behind the law, was showcasing your where's for campuses and the district. So it just seemed that, yes, by all means, this is showcasing, so therefore, why establish some kind of a standard that's going to automatically put some campuses at unacceptable? You see that the exemplary level, you had 44 elementary, 10 junior high, and 6 high school with exemplary for the fine arts component. The district is, was at recognized. You have before you the whole sheet that gives all the criteria and the rating standards. And based on those rating standards, you'll see that it shows the district got its rating based on basically an average of the campuses, for the most part. Almost all the components were like that, all the criteria. But because it's an averaging for the campuses, if you got a .5, it was rounded up. So therefore, it benefited the campus quite a bit. But if you did the very same thing at the district level, you're sort of compounding a lot of the rounding. So the rounding demarcation was at .7 for the district. With the Wellness and Physical Education component, you see again, 47 elementary at exemplary level, junior high 11, high school 5, and district got exemplary. Community and parent involvement, 36 elementary at exemplary level, 6 junior high, and 5 high school, with the district getting a recognized at that, for that component. For the 21st Century Workforce Development, we had 35 elementaries reaching the exemplary level, junior high 11, high school 6. The district obtained a rating of recognized. For second language acquisition, 53. Actually, all the regular elementaries received exemplary on that one. And that was mostly because of the, you know, it, whatever, the ELL, for instance, who are, had the opportunity for services, they were provided those services. Nine of the junior high and five of the high school. Over there in the not applicable column might be something like, oh, you have, we have, for instance, community-based health service, community-based health services, you have the daycares, and some of these things just don't apply with them. They kind of come under a different component or criteria, I should say. The digital learning environment, thank you very much for Mr. Chad Brandon for giving us all the information regarding that. That there were two criteria in particular across the board, and that was basically the Wi-Fi access and also the ratio of digital or electronic devices per student. Four elementary at exemplary level, nine junior high, and five high school. Chad assured me that even though there's only 50 elementaries with recognized, by the end of next year, they'll probably be all at the exemplary level. Dropout prevention strategies, 40 exemplary, with elementary, 6 exemplary for junior high and 3 for high school. One might wonder what in the world could be dropout prevention strategy for the elementary in particular? And one of the things is the developmentally appropriate program, the DAP program, the training at the K-2 level. We know that when it comes to research and whatnot, what happens at the K-2 level pretty much can predict your dropout later on. So that's how important that is. So it was whether or not the teachers, to what extent the teachers were trained, you know, on that. So that's what defined much of what elementary provided there. Like I said, junior high, 6 exemplary and 3 exemplary for high school, the district obtaining at the recognized level. Educational programs for gifted and talented students, that is, I know, of great interest in the community. And the criteria and the ratings were based on the frequency of opportunities for GT students. You know, one during the school was per week, you know, exemplary was if you had two, at least two per week, then you were at exemplary level. With the, for the other criteria, which was how many opportunities were there outside the school day? You don't expect to have that many as you do during the school day. So if they had at least one per week, that was regarded as an exemplary level. The district obtained a recognized level for the average. Now, this one is not part of the overall, but it is required. And it has the ratings of just yes or no, compliance and policy reporting. And in all cases, including the district, it was all yes. Overall rating, we had 45 elementaries with exemplary, 9 recognized. With junior high, 10 exemplary and 2 recognized. With high school, 6 exemplary and 2 recognized. And for the district overall, a recognized rating. And I will entertain your questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Carter. And before we get to questions from my colleagues, Ms. Benjamin, we don't have any cards for this, for this public hearing at all? Okay, perfect. At this time, we'll take questions from trustees if we have any. Dr. Raish.
I can't let you just not have any questions, Dr. Carter. Okay, I don't really have a detailed question. Can you just give us a quick overview on how these scorecards, if you will, tie into or don't tie into what we are doing as far as district scorecards? Are we able to merge this data together or is this a completely separate process at this point?
It really is a completely separate process. What we tried to do is, in working with the DIDC and even presenting a proposal to the DIDC, what are the criteria that might be reviewed that are at least connected with whatever the efforts are in the strategic plan? So at least there's some attempt with some alignment along those lines. TASSA had a lot of possibilities as far as criteria. And all of those were looked at and it's kind of like, no, no, not that one. And it's not, and those weren't necessarily because of what it might mean in terms of our ratings. It was just, that's not, that wasn't our focus, you know, there's something else, there's something else. So we tried to keep it aligned as much as possible, but there was not a whole lot of latitude in doing that. So it's kind of like, about that much overlap or alignment.
Well, maybe with all the great work that we're doing in our district and the tremendous framework that you've built as far as the underlying architecture of everything, maybe the TA and the state can learn from us and have a different system in the future.
It would be nice.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Carter's retiring. He's not worried about. You've done a good, you've done a good job, Dr. Carter. And I know this was a new creation of new programs, so I thank you for all your work on that and also for all the work you've done for everything in the past. You've been a valuable asset to this district. So thank you for all your support over these years. At that time, the public hearing on Community and Student Engagement Self-Evaluation Report is now closed. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. The segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda night. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate and trustees will not reply to the speakers. derogatory comments aimed at individuals will not be tolerated. Personal matters and inappropriate subjects for open forum. I have one card from the audience this evening. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our one card this evening is Ms. Debbie Hanlon, talking, speaking over the budget over athletics for 2014 and 15. Good evening, Ms. Hanlon.
Good evening. Good evening, President Hogg, board, Dr. Cavazos. I understand proper protocol probably would have been to go through central administration to present what I'm going to tonight. But I felt like with the budget being presented tonight, that it needed to be brought forth at this time. I'm just respectfully requesting that, along with the 40 current positions that are currently gonna be voted on tonight, to add an assistant athletic director to our district. After all, for the 2014-15 school year, after all, it's the seventh largest city with 11th largest school district. And there's definitely need with the growing number of kids that we have participating in junior high and high school athletics. At this time, currently around 12,000, as I understand it. Not to mention, she's over K-12 PE, step team cheerleading, as we just saw from Dr. Carter, with an exemplary rating, which is awesome. And, but she is only one person doing this job that three people did just three years ago with the, before the budget cuts came along. So, and also to me, many more responsibilities than back then. Plus, she's the director of the program that generates revenue for the district, so very much needed. So if we, in my opinion, if we truly want to keep along with our strategic plan to get 100% participation in extracurricular activities and to go forth in this process, that we need help to keep the district where she has brought it and has taken it today, to keep it where it is.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Hanlon. Next on our item is action items. Action item A, consider all matters incident related to issuance and sale of Arlington Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds salaries 2014 A. Dr. Kavasis.
Thank you, President Hogg, and I think we heard a presentation at the dinner meeting, so if there are any questions at this point, we can answer.
Perfect. This is a discussion we've had many a times over our bond, issuance of the first set of bonds officially for that. Do we have discussion or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Perfect. Go right ahead, Ms. Solins.
Perfect. I'd like to move to approve the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance and sale of the Arlington Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2014 A and approving all matters pertaining thereto.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pena. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Solins, a second by Ms. Pena. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. We have officially issued our bonds. Next, we'll move to action item B, consider adoption of the 2014-15 fiscal, fiscal year budget. Dr. Kavasis.
Thank you, President Hogg, and we've heard a number of budget presentations throughout the recent board meetings, and Cindy has a recap of that for your consideration tonight.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasis, we've had several conversations about our budget over the last few months, and so tonight we present to you a proposed budget for your consideration. By law, we do have to adopt our budget by June thirtieth because our fiscal year begins July first. I'm going to briefly recap some of the things that we've talked about previously and, and summarize for you where the budget stands today, the, the one that you will consider. The total budget for all funds is eight hundred and eleven point seven million dollars. You can see the breakdown here by the different funds. The general operating fund has a, an expenditure budget of five hundred and eight million. Natural gas fund has budgeted expenditures of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Debt service fund, sixty-three point eight million. Construction fund, two hundred and five point four million. And then the food service enterprise fund has a, has budgeted expenses of thirty-three point nine million. So all totaled eight hundred and eleven point seven million dollars. You have before you our estimated tax rate, and we'll remind everybody that we will not vote on the tax rate tonight. We actually vote on the tax rate in August because we get our certified property values July twenty-fifth. So we'll bring this back to you, and the board will vote on, on the tax rate in August. Based on what we have projected those certified values to be, we estimate that the total tax rate for the fourteen-fifteen year would be a dollar thirty-five point eight-four cents. There would be no change in the MNO tax rate of a dollar four, and the debt service tax rate that we are estimating at thirty-one point eight-four cents would be an increase of six point six cents over this year, and that reflects payments on the first sale of bonds that the board just approved. On the general fund, we discussed before that, that this year we have an operating surplus of nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and then when you add to that the funds that we will take out of surplus fund balance for the new elementary school in East Arlington, and we, once we expend those funds, then the bottom line will show a deficit of twenty point eight million dollars. But again, that is only because we are taking money out of fund balance to build a new elementary school. When you look strictly at operating expenses, current year revenue, current year operating expenses, we have almost a one million dollar surplus there. If the budget is adopted like this, our budgeted ending fund balance for June thirtieth of 2015 would be a hundred and fifty-one point four million dollars. And just to hit several of the highlights that are in the budget, these reflect items the board has taken action on previously. There's a two percent salary increase in the budget. There's a wellness program and an increase of twenty dollars per month for health insurance contributions for all employees who participate in health insurance. We have new positions in the budget that will provide teachers for the Arlington Collegiate High School, secondary counseling positions, dyslexia teachers, curriculum and instruction positions, oversight for the bond program, and even bus drivers to help transport kids to and from the early college high school, and some of our additional dual credit opportunities that are offered on the TCC campuses, and just additional off-campus needs within the district. There is a new expense that we are showing this year. It's mandated by the legislature. It's a new TRS contribution that all school districts are required to make. It's one and a half percent of our eligible salaries, and that's actually a kind of a complic, not terribly complicated, but there is a, a formula there to apply the one and a half percent against. And for this one year only, the legislature will give us funding to offset that contribution, that required contribution. Going forward, though, in future years, beginning with the 2015-16 year, the state has said that they will not fund that contribution, so districts will be required to pay for that themselves. So it is essentially an unfunded mandate. There's funding in the budget for elementary school PLCs, funding for a learning management system for online learning and prepackaged online student course content to help us move more towards some online offerings for both professional development and instruction. Junior high athletics expansion, we're adding soccer to the elementary program, I'm sorry, wrestling. And then we've reduced utility costs again this year. There's a reduction of about one point six million dollars in utilities because of pricing that we've secured and also just continued efforts on the part of our energy management staff and staff throughout the district, changing our, our culture and our habits and how we handle electricity out in our buildings. We have funding here for energy retrofit projects. This is a continuation of some funding that we received at the beginning of this current year through a low, a low-interest loan program from the state energy conservation office. We've done some of the projects in thirteen-fourteen. The rest of them will wrap up this next year. We have provided for capital needs. There are some equipment needs in here, including some plant services equipment, custodial equipment, and maintenance equipment. As we mentioned a minute ago, we're taking surplus fund balance and applying that towards the cost of a new elementary school that will serve our district literally for decades to come, so a very good use of, of that one-time money to serve students in the East Arlington area and help provide some relief from some crowding that we have in that area. We also have funding in the budget for year three strategic activities, strategic plan activities that include training for the new instructional model, work on the data warehouse and the dashboard that goes with that, development of an employee appraisal instrument as we move into performance pay, design teams and planning work for our new facilities that will help us implement the facility vision that is part of our strategic plan. Surveys and related training will continue, also implementing a wellness plan and developing, continuing our development of leaders within the district. We also have funding in here for FFC recommendations. We recognized our FFC members earlier, and I mentioned that, that their recommendations add approximately ten million dollars to the budget this year, and that does include salary increase that was approved by the board, but there are counselors that were added, eighteen counselors at the junior highs and high schools, and then you can see the other items added here that the, the FFC brought forward to the board. And again, one of their recommendations did have to do with salary increases and health insurance contribution. So this continues the list of, of items that they brought forth. If the budget is adopted as it has been proposed this evening, you can see this chart show you how our fund balance is trending and how it will trend next year. We will have over three and a half months' worth of operating expense in our fund balance. That is significant. The credit rating agencies want to see at least two months of operating expense in our fund balance. It does drop off from four and a half months in this current year to three point, about three point six months next year. And again, that's strictly because we're using surplus fund balance for the construction of that new elementary school. So we have a very healthy fund balance. We take a look each year at not only the current year's budget, but we make some assumptions and forecast forward what we think our budget will look like. This is a good planning tool for us and helps us monitor where we are as we move forward and continue to consider other needs in the district. The thing that always makes this very difficult is the fact that the legislature meets every two years, and so we don't know from one session to the next what they may change in the funding formulas or the appropriations for those formulas. So in this next four-year period that you see here, between 2015-16, all the way up to 2018-19, the legislature will meet two more times. We also have the school finance lawsuit that is pending. There has been a slight delay in the progress of that lawsuit as the state sought to have the judge recuse himself from the trial. That has now been heard by another judge, and they denied that, that petition from the state. So that case will now continue forward. There is an expectation that there will be a ruling coming in the next couple of months, and then this will likely move directly to the state Supreme Court, no matter who prevails in this, this lower level ruling. And it's unlikely that there will be a ruling in time to impact the legislative session next spring, so we are likely looking at a special session next summer is, is the current expectation or early that following fall. We have to make a lot of assumptions then, when we, when we do these forecasts. We have to make assumptions on what our property values will do, how they will grow or change over this period of time, what our enrollment may do, and then inflation, and then again, when we make these forecasts, we always use the current school funding law, and we don't make any assumptions that that will change at all in the upcoming period of time. So what you see here, the, the most important thing to look at is the line that is labeled surplus and deficit. The column in, in yellow here is the summary of our budget that is before you this evening for consideration, and then you can see to the right of that the next four years. And so in each of the next four years, we are balanced, and we have a small surplus in each of those years. We've made assumptions that property values will grow two percent each of those next four years, and that we will not change the MNO tax rate during that time. We have also assumed that our enrollment will grow by approximately two hundred and fifty students each year. And again, as you'll see the note in the right-hand column at the bottom, that there's no change in state funding factored in here, and we do not ever factor in any assumptions about salary increases in future years. The strategic plan items that are in this year's budget are considered one-time costs, and so we take those out before we make forecasts for future years. And then we have built in here forecasts for the cost to operate our new facilities that will be constructed through the bond program. So as they come online, there's cost added in here for those. And as we've said many times during the spring, as we talked about the bond package to the community, we anticipate that once all those facilities come online in five years, the total cost to operate those will be three point two million dollars per year. I have added and pointed out here again that included in here is this new TRS mandate that begins this year. There's a, an offset this year for that cost, but starting next year, we have to foot that bill ourselves, and that's four million dollars. So that, that's very significant. That is on our list of unfunded mandates that we will present to our legislators as part of our legislative agenda this year. So it, it looks good. Again, fund balance is very healthy. We do have, besides the general fund, we adopt budgets for several other funds, and the slide is a very simple summary of those. In the construction fund, there is a, what appears to be a deficit there, but that is only because we sold bonds in February for work that will be done this summer, and so that revenue has already been collected and is sitting in fund balance. We'll be taking that money back out of fund balance this upcoming, this summer and through the early fall to do that work. We have built in here an equal amount of revenue and expense for the construction fund, for the bonds you just approved this evening. And then you see the, the food service fund has a small surplus. So highlights of those other funds, the debt service fund, again, the expenditures there include the principal and interest on the first sale of the bond program, the bonds that were authorized a few moments ago. We also have in the construction fund, we have funding for, to finish out the work that we began through the 2009 bond program. We expect that by the end of the fall, we will be done with all of that work. We are beginning now the work on the 2014 bond program, so there's funding in here for that, revenue and expense. We are also using some local fund balance for furniture and equipment for the Arlington Collegiate High School. TCC is building the building, and then AISD is funding the furnishings and equipment for that building. And the food service fund, as we've discussed before, lunch prices will have to go up ten cents. That's a mandate through the Federal Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. There won't be any price increase for breakfast at all or reduced-priced lunches. We have included in the food service enterprise fund, there are twelve and a half new positions that staff that Arlington Collegiate High School and help us with the additional participation we'll see as we implement a new mandated universal free breakfast program and to take care of just increased participation throughout the district. And then likewise here, the two percent salary increase and the funding for the wellness program and the twenty dollar per month increase in health insurance. So again, for your consideration this evening, we have the, the proposed budget. By law, we have to adopt that by June thirtieth. We'll receive our certified property values July twenty-fifth and bring the information back to you in August so you can adopt the, the tax rate. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Powell, I don't know how you do it. You must have some help.
I, I have good help.
Oh, they're sitting right there.
They're, they're sitting right here. Yes, they are.
Can I start with the one and a half percent that the state has mandated?
Yes.
Okay. They're going to make us hold this coming budget year, is that correct?
Yes.
And then after that's going to cost us about four million dollars, depending on our salary?
Right.
Structure, okay. So that's, that's really an unfunded mandate?
It absolutely is.
The legislature could just as easily have passed this burden on to the employees, couldn't they? They could have raised the employee deduction to
And, and they are doing that, too.
TRS by one and a half percent.
Yes, they, and they, they did increase the employee's contribution to TRS over a period of the next several years. This was a, an attempt to maintain TRS as a defined benefit plan, and so the thought was that school districts needed to help contribute to TRS.
Because we have more money than the state does.
They think so.
Okay. In your crystal ball, do you know what the state's going to do the next two legislative sessions?
No, we do not. I, I will tell you that in having some conversation with our legislative consultants who specialize in public education finance, we don't know what the outcome of the lawsuit will be, but they believe that it's very reasonable that the legislature will increase the basic allotment that is used in the funding formulas. If they were to raise it just one percent, that would generate another four million dollars for us. And to put that in perspective, in last legislative session, they did increase the basic allotment, even though the, the school finance lawsuit was pending over here. They, they didn't change any of the formulas, but the allotment itself that gets multiplied times all of our students' and average daily attendance and the different weights, they did increase it. For the first year of the biennium, it went up, I think, three point seven percent, three point eight percent. The second year of the biennium, which is the year we're in right now, or, or about to be in, it went up one point eight percent. And so again, they, they believe, our legislative consultants believe it's, it's very reasonable, given the way the current state economy is trending, that the legislature will increase that basic allotment again. So it's, it's very possible we'll see an additional four million dollars each year. So, it's very possible we'll see an additional $4 million each year of the next two years of biennium.
And that would just happen to offset the TRS money?
That would.
We added a lot of positions for next year, didn't we?
We, and it's a net effect, because when we went through staffing, we also reduced the number of teaching positions we needed. So, we did add approximately 40 positions into the general fund budget. That's a net change of the reductions in the teacher counts and TA counts and the additions.
Okay. Mr. Hogg, President Hogg, I have a letter from Mr. Hibbs that I'd like to read later on, once we're through questioning Ms. Powell.
Without a doubt. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Solins.
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Powell, I had some calls earlier today, several calls from the community, and it had a similar theme. And I just wanted to go back. I know you've shared this information with us before, but I know we cover a lot of information and a lot of different statutes for how our budget and finance system work, and that the question that I heard repeatedly was about TRS Active Care Insurance, and what our involvement is as far as selecting vendors, or our ability to opt out. And I know that you've covered that with us, but I wonder if you would mind just sharing that again, just for the viewing audience or people here, on our real limitations on making changes in TRS Active Care.
Absolutely. We are members of the TRS Active Care Plan, along with many districts across the state. By law, once you have joined TRS Active Care, we cannot exit that plan, and we don't have any input on the selection of their administrator. TRS is changing plan administrators this summer. They went through an RFP process and selected a different administrator, but it is a self-funded plan at the end of the day, and so the premiums are based on the claims that are generated throughout all the districts that are members, and all the participants in the plan. So, we don't have any input on that.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mays.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. I just have one quick question on the TRS supplemental contribution. It says 1.5% of eligible salaries. Does eligible mean something?
Yes, it does, and that's what I was saying a minute ago. There is a formula, and for teachers, we have to pay 1 and 1/2% on the state minimum salary. So, we don't have to pay the 1% on what we pay teachers above the state minimum salary. For employees, other employee groups where there's not a state minimum salary established, it's 1 and 1/2% of your base salaries.
So, of what we pay them?
Right.
Okay.
That's it, Ms. Mays? Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Powell, point of clarification. On your slide, it said $20 contribution related to wellness. They have to participate in the wellness program, correct?
Absolutely, yes. We're going to offer the wellness program to all employees, but if you are on our health insurance plan, in order to receive the additional $20 per month towards your health insurance premiums, you will need to be a member of that wellness program.
And that will be in the form of a premium payback, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to point a clarification. We've been discussing the budget for many, seems like, months, and Mr. Barron, I think you have a final thing, and then we have a motion. I'd love to accept it.
Well, I wasn't going to be the final thing. I wanted to add to the wellness thing, is that we don't want people to go out and have to run 10 miles or anything.
No, no, no.
This is a pretty loose plan.
It is.
Okay, I don't want people, don't call me.
Good point, Mr. Barron.
Be in the insurance, sign up for wellness, do whatever they ask you to do, part of which is going to be go get a wellness check, right?
No cost to the employee.
Right, no cost, and get your $20 every month.
$20 premium payback.
Yeah.
That's a big point.
Thank you. Can I read Mr. Hibbs' letter now?
Mr. Barron, please, go right ahead.
This is from Mr. Hibbs. "I am sorry that I could not be in attendance for tonight's vote on the 2014-2015 budget. The administration and board of trustees have worked diligently to build a budget that offers expanded instructional positions, staffing to oversee the implementation of the bond, the building of a new school to ease overcrowding, and across-the-board raises in compensation for our employees. I am in complete support of the board that is being, of the budget that is being presented, and want to thank staff and my colleagues for their dedication to the AISD. Respectfully, John Hibbs, AISD trustee, place four." Thank you, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. At this time, I accept the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the adoption of the 2014-15 fiscal year budget as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Mays, and a second by Ms. Pena. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in affirmative. We have a budget for 2014-15. Thank you, Ms. Powell, and to your entire team for all the budget work. We know it's a welcome relief, and at least makes it a little easier when we finish in June than in August, correct?
It does.
Which was still a good change we made, and that was a good one. Perfect. On that, we will move to the next item. Item C, Consider Cause Number 348272471-14 Arlington ISD versus Field Turf USA and Field Turf Target USA Holdings, Inc. At this time, I would be willing to accept the motion.
I move to approve taking the action discussed with council in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. I have a motion by Ms. Pena. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pena, and a second by Ms. Solins. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in affirmative. Motion passes. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda items. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda tonight from colleagues? Seeing none, we'll be considering items listed on the agenda under consent item. Ms. Powell, you shared donations and bids, and we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Actually, I'm going to have to get to the page here, and we have six bids on the agenda this evening, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids, and the bids representing the best value for the district. We do have donations on the report this evening. When we met last time, we were not sure that we were going to bring another report in this fiscal year, but we have. And so, the donations reported for your consideration this evening total $115,710, and that brings our year-to-date total for 2013-14 to $1,196,475.
That is wonderful. It's always a pleasure to hear that. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to accept.
I have a motion by Dr. Reich. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Mays. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustee voting in affirmative. The consent agenda items pass. Next, we'll move on to discussion items. Item A, Studer Group Report of Spring 2014 Parent Satisfaction Survey. Dr. Kavasis.
Thank you, President Hogg, and at this time, we'd like to present our parent satisfaction survey results for the spring of 2014, and Studer representative Janet is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Janet.
President Hogg, Superintendent Kavasis, members of the board. It's great to be back with you tonight. I'm going to present the overview of the results for the parent satisfaction survey, the employee engagement survey, and the district support services survey. So, we'll take one at a time, and go through the parent satisfaction first. The first slide provides the number of responses for the parent satisfaction survey, so good news. So, there's going to be good news altogether on the parent satisfaction survey. I mean, this is going to be, we start with this one, and there's all types of reasons to celebrate, and I think you'll see that. So, the participation is still very strong in regard to the parent satisfaction survey. This slide provides the items that are part of the survey, and what I did was just highlight three items that had extremely high ratings, but if you look at any of the items on the survey, you can see that all of them are above a 4.0, and it's so hard to just point out one that's better than the other, so to speak, because there's just really good results there. So, when you look at the overall results and the items, the items are trending up, and when you look at your overall results in comparison to some of the benchmarks districts, here's probably the best news of all. We are comparing you to this other districts at the same time that it was administered, in other words, at the end of the first year. So, this is, these were the results of districts when this survey was administered at the end of the first year. So, such good news for you all, because you're the highest at that point of any district that's in our benchmark. And I think it speaks so highly. It just complements the work that you've done in the community with the bond and the referendum. The community and the parents of, your parents speak very highly of you, or think very highly of you, and the schools that their children attend. So, just a lot to celebrate there. So, any questions on the parent satisfaction survey?
Any questions from colleagues on item A? Good report, Janet.
Yes, good.
Item B, go ahead, on employee engagement.
So, in just a couple, I'm giving you the overall results. If you remember, this is the district results. The report has the results by school. They're hot off the press, so to speak, so we're still dissecting and reviewing those reports, but these are the overall district results.
Of course.
The employee engagement. So, this is just a refresher. The way we define employee engagement is the extent to which employees perceive that their leaders are providing them with a good work environment, a work environment where they can be productive and successful. So, here are the employee engagement results. So, I looked at the trends. If you remember, too, with this survey, we administer it twice a year. So, we administer it around midterm in December, and then we administer it at the end of the year. So, at this point, we've had three administrations of the survey, and I just highlighted a little bit in yellow. It's still, you know, you still have a number of employees completing it, but the trend tended to go down in May in terms of number of employees completing the survey. You know, not drastically, but it is a downward trend, so it's probably just something we should ask when we sit down and talk. You know, why could that be occurring? There was a lot going on. You know, there might be a lot of reasons why that's occurring, but it is something probably to look at. These are the items. There are 14 items on our survey that count as the overall mean. The 15th item is the one that was added by the district, so we still look at that by item, but we don't include it in the overall mean as a way to benchmark against the other surveys. So, if you look at the overall mean, and then you can look at that the responses or the averages by item, you begin to see which ones are trending a little bit higher, which are in green, and the yellows, which ones are those that are on the lower end. So, we then will begin to dissect the content of those items to try to ask the questions why. And we can also now look at, we can go a little deeper, and we can look at, you know, what's happening at the school and department level. I did a quick, I've done a quick glance, and so you can see some schools are going to drastically increase, so there's a lot to celebrate underneath here, and then there's the opposite that's happening, too. So, that's the power of this, more than just the general results, that it gives us an opportunity to really ask and probe into certain types of questions to ask what's going on, and where there may need to be some assistance and help in development. And that's just, this is just the bar graph of those means, and then if you look at the benchmark comparison, this is where the district compares to other districts at this particular time in the database. So, any questions there? So, you know, I think, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dr. Piltcher, the, a number of participants, that decline, is that something you saw in other districts in May, that you would see that type of a decline?
And sometimes we see a decline, and sometimes, you know, it's not, I can't say across the board that we would see that. I think when there are certain types of things that are occurring in a district, like occurred, and people are tired of, tired from just some type of effort that's gone on, or if there's been some estate transition where people are, you know, just kind of waiting to get to the end of the year, then, you know, that may, that trend may be there. But I think, I don't, with that said, we never like to see that trend go down at the end of the year. I think it's, it represents, we should begin to see it go up more than we see it go down. But I think, again, Ms. Solins, when we begin to look at it, we're probably going to see pockets of places where it went up, and pockets of places where it went down that made it go down altogether.
Right, that's because I'd like to do all that we can to encourage all employees to, and I owe you a too, Dr. Kavasis.
And I think we've talked about that, in fact, our senior staff, and a couple of things to note. One is we, the first time was March, and then this time was May, and there were reasons for that, a lot of different conflicts and things in terms of reasons.
So close.
But the important, I think, part is for next year, we're going to publish those dates early, because we had to move some dates around as to when employees are expecting these surveys to come out. So, we're going to publish the dates early. We're going to go back to try to get it in March, so that we plan ahead and make sure that we keep consistent with the March timeline. That worked well the first year in terms of respondents.
It does.
And so, we're going back to that, but more importantly, publishing it early so everybody can put it on their calendar and plan for it, basically.
It does. A March date is, it seems to be a better participation date than May, because people are just tired, and there's a lot going on, you know, so that would, and you get your results. The other part is we're able to get the results prior to school ending, instead of now that we're into the summer.
And then the second part of that is looking, as Janet said, in each school and department, and where we had the dips in terms of participation, because it is in certain areas that that went down. We've got to examine that closer, and then strategies to make sure that the employees are afforded plenty of opportunity and reminders and all to participate.
Very good. Another question, or comment, is it's good to see that we now have three of these surveys down, so we are well on our way to understanding more and more about our district. It's a great diagnostic tool, and this will be used also to set our metrics for improvement.
Correct.
Right, so, is that started yet, or is that a work in progress on that?
That actually comes back to the board as a district scorecard, and for your approval in August. We've started setting the metrics in terms of the first brush of it as a draft, so that then the board can look at it, and then it guides the district plan and campus plans and things like that.
Outstanding.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, when we, when I presented last year, it was baseline, we got a sense of it. Now, we can really look at the data, you know, not necessarily for punitive purposes, but just to really ask the right questions so that we can do the work of improvement. I mean, now we're really into that part. Any other questions on the?
We do. Dr. Reich.
Thank you. And I, Janet, appreciate the information, and Ms. Solins hit the majority of what I was going to ask about. The downward trend, of course, we'll look at that analyzing. I was curious with the other districts, besides working in March, the benchmark districts, do you know if they do anything different as far as marketing and communications, anything that we can learn from, or are we doing the same or better? I was just curious on that aspect.
Yeah, you know, I think, just to go back, so when we go back over the year in terms of what we've done, the first thing that we did is teach the survey rollout process. And so, you know, what this begins to speak to is the extent to which there's fidelity with the survey rollout process, because that begins to allow the employees to provide input back to the leaders and to continue that dialogue. So, now we can kind of test that a little bit to see, you know, where we can look at, are those individuals who are really showing improvement, living that out with fidelity, and then look at some of the best practices that they're doing. So, I'm not answering your question directly, but to say, I think it's very typical that you begin to see, so it can trend in either way. It can either go up, stay the same, or go down, but it depends on how many people are living it out to fidelity and really getting that bump. The other thing is the, it's kind of like the idea of movement through change. The honeymoon part is over, not there, this might not ever have been a honeymoon to some people, but in other words, when the data and the results start coming in, the reality of the reality of the results are there and so, and, and when they're shared, the good news is they're shared, but the other news is it's more difficult because when they're shared, people really are looking at the content of the questions and answering them in a potential way. So we can, we can almost look at this as there was baseline and then we started getting additional information. So we're probably landing on what the true starting point is somewhere in between the administrations.
Okay.
Just because people are, the, this, the employees are hopefully looking at it from the standpoint that this could be an opportunity for them to provide input. That's the whole purpose.
Sure, sure. Okay. And the final question is on, I, I, I know that this will come out in the, the district scorecard overall, but as far as the, the target goal of how we were in our numbers compared to last year with the, I, I would assume with this, the parent survey that we met or exceeded it.
Absolutely exceeded.
And-
Super exceeded.
Maybe a, didn't make it in this employee engagement.
And that's the, the summary slide that I have is really the red, green, yellow in terms of where you are with the, on the scorecard piece.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Yeah. Other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. It would appear that we probably should have done the pre rollout, rollout instruction to our principals again for May. If the principals are the ones responsible for making this happen.
And this is really all the departments and it's all the employees. So it's all-
It's everybody.
Departments and campus based, non-campus based and things like that. The rollout I think Janet's talking about is after you get the results, then the rollout of the results. And, and so when you have March administration, then you can roll out the results before the end of the year and, and things like that. That is, and again, looking at each department, not only school, but each department and the level of participation is something that we're going to do. We just, we, I think we just got the results in terms of the campuses to see where those dips were in terms of participation. You know, I think it's 500 down approximately or something like that, but it can be isolated to certain places and, and then what are the strategies there to increase participation? But overall, to set those dates and, and get back to March, I think is, is the key strategy.
Okay. Dr. Peltier, could you remind us physically how the survey went? Do people have to fill out a piece of paper or go online or?
There's an online survey. They also have an opportunity to, to complete a piece of paper if they don't have access to a computer. So we always give them an opportunity to complete it either way. The majority of the employee engagement surveys come online.
Okay. And what timeframe was involved? Hours, days, weeks?
Weeks.
14, 16, three weeks, three weeks.
And there was some extension of that and communication of extension of that because part of the, the task here is that they monitor also the number of respondents. So if, if we get, if Dr. Carter gets information about, you know, how many have responded, then we extend the deadline so that we can increase participation, send out the district announcement, principals and all that again.
And we have no filter for double dipping? Double entry?
There could be a possibility of that. It's the decision, you know, it's the decision to make. So we can, you know, we could code and assign a, a number where, but then the, it's, it's, it's a, it's whatever you want in terms of the trust factor, people trusting that that would be the way to do it. So we've landed on the other way. We can always change down the road, but we've landed on that way. Our goal, and I, I think Superintendent Cavassos, we've, we had, we've talked and talked and talked about this and I really like the way he's landed on it. This is an opportunity to ensure that everybody has an opportu, can provide feedback and we don't want to do anything to move against that. And until we can build that maturity in the organization, we just learn from it as we go.
Thank you.
Ms. Baze.
Thank you, Janet. Just a couple of questions and pardon my voice, but for the individuals who did not either take the time to fill out the survey or may have had no interest in filling out the survey, have we reached out to have any feedback as to why the survey may not have been filled out?
It should be part of the survey rollout process. So the, each leader will roll out their results to their staff. And so as part of that survey rollout process, if there are individual departments or schools that show dips, then we can, we'll build in some type of probing question into that results rollout process to, you know, for, for the leader to ask why there was a, why there was a decline in the, the participation. And it, and there could be a, you know, there could be a number of reasons it could be, I just didn't do it. You know, it's just a time, so.
And just as a, just to add some context.
Please, Dr. Peltier.
Add some context to the timeframe. There were a number of surveys. It was with our bond preparation and things like that, surveying and surveying. The state came out late with a survey mandated by the law that they were very aggressive, I think, and Wally can attest to this, of surveying employees and teachers and all that. So there were, there were a number of competing surveys, if you will, during this timeframe, which again, kind of pushed it into May and things like that, some of the context.
Yeah.
We were surveying the community and things like that.
Absolutely. And I don't like, like the overall number doesn't, so that's why I gave it a yellow. I mean, until we, the, the, the more disturbing place would be if there was just, you know, let's say a, a department or school had 50 and they had eight. You know, then we're like, what happened? What's wrong? You know, so that's, I think, where we dive deeper in just to ask the question, if those circumstances occur, then those are worth a, a look. The external circumstances were a little more difficult in May. So there's, we'll make adjustments for that and look at the places where we can build the best improvements.
Okay. And then I would also want to be sure that the opportunity to take the survey for those that are outside of a classroom or an office.
Yes.
That, that their accessibility was there as much as someone who was sitting in a classroom in front of a computer.
We do, we do everything we can to, and that's where the paper surveys come in. We provide every opportunity that we possibly can for that to occur. That input's important.
And some of our non-classroom or non-school areas have great participation.
Yeah.
And continue to have great participation.
Yeah. Which is, I mean, that's a real win. I mean, I think that's the, the winning part of some of the underlying pieces that are here. It's nice.
Good. Then just my last comment is I'm excited for after the rollout happens because a lot of times people don't participate because they don't really think it's going to make a difference.
Yeah.
So I think once that rollout comes and we start setting metrics to make differences, I think I'm going to see that participation increase. So that's exciting.
It is. Thanks.
Great point, Ms. Baze. Once they realize we use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great point. Dr. Reisch.
Thank you. I had another thought. With the analysis of the data, are we looking mainly at an, an annual review? I, I'm thinking about December to March versus May. Obviously March is a, a much better time to increase your numbers. It, it wouldn't be, if we're trying to take any kind of corrective action between December and March, that's not really a good time window. So I, I couldn't remember if this is annual or are we trying to be responsive to each survey?
So we, the midterm survey is a, gives us a pulse check on how we're trending. So the rollout occurs, the rollout is coached to occur every time the survey is administered. So as the outcome of a rollout, there's a, probably for us, a 60-day plan, you know, based on the school year, but there's some type of semester plan that occurs from one administration to the other in terms of the priority actions. And that comes collectively from the rollout process. So the, the employees are providing the leaders with input on what those actions should be. And so there, so it doesn't come and go. It should be a continuous process.
Right.
That's where we, that's where we're trying to get to.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Ms. Sullins.
Thank you. Dr. Peltier, could you put up the chart that shows the comparison of AISD to the Studer Partners? Yes. For either one of them. And I was just, and I know all districts are different. And, and I don't know if you have this information here. You know, this is the other district's first year results compared to our first year results. If, if we were looking at districts one through seven on where they are now, on how they've used this information to, to improve, you know, have, have they, are we generally seeing increases on how they're using that information so that we do improve our employee engagement?
Yes. We've seen, I would say, especially into the second and, into the second and the third year, you begin to see improvements.
Okay.
So it's for, for employee engagement, it's, it's pretty typical that it flatlines until, until it becomes really serious.
Right. And I was just asking for, for all of the surveys too, there's a parent engagement survey as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, we've seen, I could, and at some point, I can bring some trend charts. It'd probably be interesting just to see, but I can, we can give you some districts in terms of how they're trending up, but they usually trend, unless you're, you know, you're at a high, 4.3 is pretty high in terms of parent satisfaction. So you might trend up or stay about the same or, you know, a little bit, but as long as you're at that 4.3, 4.4 level, you, you probably should be pretty satisfied with that for that parent, for the parent satisfaction survey. Although I think, the other thing I think is probably important, I might have mentioned this the last time I was here, the parent satisfaction survey for districts is always higher than the employee engagement. You know, so what we've learned is that the biggest, the biggest area for learning and, and leader development is on how we build that good work environment for our own employees. But we can look at over time.
I was just curious. So, no, that's, that's, that's fine for, for this evening certainly. So thank you and we have like another survey too still?
There's, there's one more.
There's one more.
Yeah. So the-
Wait, just, we're almost there.
Okay.
Ms. Fainya.
On that same slide that Ms. Sullins referred to, are the comparing or the other districts where you're showing us their numbers, are they all large districts?
They're not. And, you know, I, when I look at the districts, the lowest district is the smallest one we have. So, you know, you would think, so we kind of, we start doing the same thing. Well, if they're larger, they're going to be, you know, but if you look, the, the district four is the smallest. So it's, I don't think that we can, they're, they range from small, there's about two, two districts in here that are close to your size. So, but there's nothing in here that would show that one is higher, one's lower based on the size of the district.
I was just considering the number, like a, a small school district could have 1,500 students, which would be a whole lot less employees, or a, there's some that have 3,200. I mean, we have one high school that has that many students.
Right. That's correct.
So I was just wondering, based on those numbers, how they were reaching out since we have such large population and how that comparison would be to get those numbers either so close or so high? So that was why I was asking that question.
Yeah. It's, and absolutely. And the, the, so the strategy's the same, the difference is the thickness in between. So, you know, for example, when we work with a smaller district, the superintendent may actually do the evaluation of the principals. So it's, it's, it's really working with one person to do one thing. When it's at a, a district that's the size of Charleston or Arlington, then, or some of the Florida districts, then you're really, you're, you're working with the executive team and then the individuals who report to them to cascade that and to reinforce, force it so that it's just the thickness of, and the consistency of how that cascades down or aligns through the, through the entire organization. That's what makes it much more difficult.
If, if I could add, Ms. Fainya, I've met with several of the Studer Partner districts and what I find that's different in this situation with the, with the district size is that of the Studer Partners that I've met, they're all set on the same quest for absolute top-notch bar excellence. And so they are all pushing for those same types of achievement and, and so it's a, it's a real common denominator I found amongst the seven, so.
You would hope so, but some of the smaller districts, the superintendent may be a bus driver, a janitor, you know, he could be doing multiple jobs. So which role does he take when he's answering the questionnaire?
Yeah.
I mean, those types of things weren't what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Fainya, I don't think Studer's working with any that small, but that is, listen, we were just at Tazby SLI and that is the case across many districts in the state of Texas. I think it's, it's good to remember from our board, we are the only district in Texas, the first district working with Studer. So we're, we're way ahead of the game and taking-
And I don't see Dr. Cavassos, you know, well, he would if asked, but I don't see him doing those two jobs. Yeah, I knew, I know you'd do it if we asked you to, but we won't.
Dr. Peltier, let's go on to the next.
Here we go.
Before Dr. Cavassos has assigned more jobs. Let's, uh, let's go on to the next one.
Okay. The, the last survey is what we call the District Services Survey. This is, if you remember, this is the survey that school leaders complete, assessing the district departments on the, on the, the quality of service that the departments, district departments provide to the schools. So this is the survey completed by leaders. So if you look at, and I think the May thing is just a trend, you know, in terms of, if you look at the participation, so we've had really good participation. So I don't want that yellow to really damper, you know, the, the other three because we've had just really excellent participation from the school leaders and then the May participation was down. And again, I think it's just May is just a, it's just a time. But, so those are the, we do, we administer that survey three times a year for the same purposes. The district departments then review the results and create an action plan for improvement and work with their teams. We assess the departments on accessibility, accuracy, attitude, or the leaders do operations and timeliness. So this is just a chart where you can see the overall means by the category. And what this begins to show, so there's kind of, you know, kind of, it, it's, the good news in this is it's trending up. So again, it's, it's the, it's the reality of the first time we take this survey, it's a survey. The second time, we're going to provide a little bit more input because we realize this is something that's possibly used. And then from the November to February, through the conversations, I think it really helped that the means started trending back up and again, trending back up in May. So even though it was May and a tough time of year, you know, the, the mean was really trending up in the right direction. And I, I think that, that the district departments are beginning to really get the hang of what this district support services provides and using it. Again, just the, the slide that shows it in a different way. And when we look at the comparison, and, and again, this is not to compare as much as it's just to give you a sense, you know, just a sense of where are you in relation to some other districts at that point in time. And so, you know, so you're, you're pretty good here. I mean, you're kind of right in there and for, for a lar, now we'll say for a larger district, this is really important because it's much more difficult for district departments to score higher because there's, it's thicker, there's a lot of them and there's a lot of conversation and communication that has to occur. So the fact that you are where you are, I think at the, with the district support services survey, you know, speaks to some good work that's being done at the district level and some improvements that can be made as well. So I don't, we don't have a question piece there, but are there any questions specifically on that, that slide before I just kind of wrap it up with the, the colorful picture? The scorecard results, so if we're looking at, this is the slide that says, if we're looking at scorecard results and we're looking at where we're trending, parent satisfaction in the green, we'll put district support services in the yellow with kind of a, I would put an upward arrow in yellow moving up. And then employee engagement, we're just, we'll put that as, as red just for not making that movement and what that began, it just tells us, which is not uncommon, that the priority emphasis needs to, to be there. And with all of what you all accomplished this last year, you can't do everything at one time, so we just refocus energies in this place. So the next, the next steps, that we'll do the rollout process with the leaders, the leaders will roll out, create their action plans. And then as we talked about before and Dr. Cavassos mentioned, we'll begin to set our goals on our new scorecards for 2015 using this year's results as well as the student achievement results and the finance pillar. Questions or comments on that?
Thank you, Dr. Peltier. Any more questions?
Good. Thank you.
You've done a wonderful job. Thank you for all the support Studer gives us and helping us set expectations. Thank you for all the support Studer gives us in helping us set expectations even higher. We expected of our leaders, and it's part of the whole district's goal, so thank you for your support.
Yeah, it's been a great pleasure, a really pleasurable experience to work with people here. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Pilcher. Next, we'll move open forum for non-gened items. I don't have any cards this evening, so we'll move over to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to share some information and a couple of pictures up there. On June 16, we had the inaugural freshman class of the new Arlington Collegiate High School at TCC Southeast, and we had a welcoming reception and celebration. This event included all the students that were accepted, 125, and their parents and siblings, et cetera, and they met their teachers for the first time and had questions answered about the Arlington Collegiate High School experience that they're going to have. It was very well-attended, very, very positive, and those students are very motivated to start in August the early college high school experience for them. Last week, I want to thank the board for their hard work, not only at the board level in terms of your meetings and things like that and all the things that you do in committee, but that you're sharing the, leading the way for others in the state. And so we had an opportunity last week to present at the School Board Association Institute in San Antonio where we talked about using evidence-based leadership and ensuring college and career culture for students, and I want to thank all of you for that dedication to not only help our district but help others in the state of Texas as well. I think our presentations were very well-received and very complimentary of the board. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and your ride, and to my colleagues, congratulations on great presentations. Ms. Mays, you were going through our Tazby ISD, so you had a pleasure of doing that, so you didn't get a present this time, but you'll definitely get in there. But to my colleagues, I think we all heard it from everyone at that conference, our presentations on many of the Studer items were some of the best of what we're doing, setting expectations high, and I think it helped us assure that where we're going and also make sure the other districts are raising the bar as to what they're doing, which is our goal for everything. At this time, we'll move into school board reports. Do we have any reports from board members? Dr. Reich.
Just some brief comments. I gave you all earlier some information via our engagement project that we have with the Tarrant County Juvenile Justice Department related to our Tarrant County Commissioner. It's an attendance improvement project with the ultimate goal to decrease truancy, to decrease the numbers of children that end up in the juvenile justice system as truants. And we are starting a project, they've only been doing this for about three months. So sometime in the fall or when they have some data to come back and present our board, they will show hopefully some, some good results. They're trying to target children, young, young children that are not yet declared truant, that are chronic absence children in as few as three unexcused absences. They are flagged, and they are intervened on a myriad of support services, either from our district or outside of our district, that can be just, you know, from some simple reassurance and counseling with the families and the students to intensive in-home work and helping with our Families in Transition or Homeless Program. Many levels to try to engage the families and the students to keep them in the system so that they don't become truants in the future. It's very exciting. I just wanted to share with everybody, we've only had two meetings as status meetings at the higher level while our, our district and county court work so hard. Just to give everybody an idea, we have at these meetings, from the county commissioner down, several from the, our local area, JPs, our constables, they sit in these meetings with us. And we have Brian Harris and Sylvia Nichols in our department, are kind, in our district, are the ones that are heading it up. They're, are boots on the ground with our, our other folks that we have working with the children directly. The, the main thing that I'd like to highlight that I wanted to bring up is the level of collaboration is wonderful between us and Tarrant County right now with the Juvenile Justice Department. It's really a great example of collaboration that's increasing effectiveness, increasing efficiencies, and we're learning from each other on data sharing and streamlining data and not being duplicative. And the, I really think that what we're doing is something that no other district and no other partnership with a county court system is doing nationally. And it'll be really exciting to see this data when it comes so that we can support it at our state level and we can brag about it at the national level. This is just part of our grant that we have with our memorandum of understanding with the Tarrant County. So be on the lookout, that's, that's the long teaser for what will be coming probably in the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. The long teaser. I like it. Ms. Mays.
Thank you. Excuse me. I also had the opportunity to attend the early collegiate high school at TCC, and I thought that was a very exciting opportunity. I think what I posted was how exciting it was to see the students that were super excited to be in a college environment and understand that they're about to be the first of what's to come. In addition to the parents that were there that were very proud, and my child was accepted into this. So I really like the idea of us doing new things and the children have an opportunity to have options that they're excited about. They were very excited even though school's not going to even start until August, and they couldn't even see the finished project, but you could not tell because they were so excited. So that was very, a very good environment to be in. Also, just to piggyback off of attending Tazby SLI in San Antonio, with this being my first opportunity to go, I just kind of wanted to share a perspective of what I thought. It's very interesting when you stay in your own little cove, and part of what we like to do is hear are there things that we can do better, things we can change, but then to be in an environment with other school districts and hear what they're doing and seeing, sometimes it gives you a new appreciation for your district. So one thing that I did learn is that AISD is definitely on the cuff of doing good things, and I think that they're in very good hands with good people, and I'm very excited to see us continue to grow. But it was very fun to sit with other new trustees because we were in the newbie class in a separate building, separated, I don't know why. But it was, it was very exciting to meet other new trustees from districts as small as 100 students in total to us, which I think we were pretty much the largest one and most of the class is always that. But once again, just very exciting to be able to go and to learn and be trained and bring back all that good information just to help the district better, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. It is interesting to hear what other districts are doing, isn't it? Yeah, it is. With that, the board did a good job. It's summer, it's about to be summer break, so we always have to keep board reports short on that one, on that one, so staff always appreciates that. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to cover?
No, we do not.
Perfect. With that, we wish everyone a wonderful summer. We will not be reconvening until August. Please be safe during your travels. Monica, have a wonderful birthday. And with that, it's 9:26, we're adjourned.